Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 2nd workshop and regular meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the exits around the room in case of mishap and now join me as we salute the American flag.
(inaudible)
Thank you. First, two announcements. One, I want to thank my colleagues, in particular, Vice Chair Dexter for running a great meeting in my absence, keeping everything on track. And second, for the, maybe just say this for a while, but we have at the back of the room available for review for any member of the public who's here, the applications, everything that we see, this is now required by law, is actually over there. But we do ask that anyone who picks it up to examine it, please leave the copy here that you see. It's our only extra copy. And apparently, some of our audience members have been absconding with the plans so that we don't have any available for the public to view afterwards. So if you're ever taking a look over there at them, just please make sure you put them back. That noted, the first item today is a new business, applicants are seeking site plan approval. It's Dollar General, proposed to be located at 1049 Violet Avenue. Gentlemen, you want to come up? And please state your names for the record inside, to meet the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Todd Hamula. I work for Zeremba Group. We're the lead developer on the project, representing Dollar General.
My name is John Andrus. I'm from Ingles and Associates, and we're the site engineers.
Thank you. Is it H.A.N.U.L.A.?
With an M. H.A.M.U.L.A.
Thank you. I couldn't quite hear that. So you're from Ohio, too?
I'm from Ohio.
Thank you. And let me say, as I always do with new site plans, I appreciate the company's interest in investing in Hyde Park and opening a business here.
And we're very excited to be proposing the project before you tonight. Thank you.
Great. Then I'll let you deal with the particulars. And as I said, there's a camera on in case you need to, you have a little pointer, et cetera. So floor's yours.
Great, great. I feel more comfortable standing if that's...
That's absolutely comfortable.
Test, test. Okay, the site, as mentioned with the introduction of the project, is on Violet Avenue. Today, it's a vacant piece of property. It's 1.35 acres. It's mainly wooded, and that's the way the site's been for, you know, for the majority of the time that it's existed in this configuration. At the rear of the site, there's a small wetland. It's less than an acre, and it's located on the site in this location here. And our development is not planning on touching that, getting in, you know, our construction activities wouldn't, you know, wouldn't get near that. So we wouldn't be affecting it. Generally, the site is flat until you get to the middle of the site where there is a little bit of a rock ridge or upcropping, which really then helps out then that the majority of the site plan is situated or planned for on the front half of the site.
Can you see this? Did I turn this?
No, but I have plans here.
Okay. The property is zoned, East Park Business District, and the use is permitted in the zoning. Dollar General, just in general, is very interested in locating stores in the market. They have one plan for this market, so they did a lot of research when we were site touring this with Dollar General, looking for properties that were properly zoned and that would permit, you know, permit their use. But sites that they're very interested are ones that front on roads that have, you know, some amount of traffic so that passerbyers know where they're located and that they're appropriately zoned in the right zoning districts. We currently have the property under contract with Carl Lawson, and the property owner does reside just south of the site. So he actually is in the house adjacent to the site, and he would be selling us this portion of property. Okay. A little bit about the site plan. And I know we had an early meeting when we introduced the project initially before we made application. So the site plans changed maybe a little bit, but for the most part, we've held true to the configuration. We have one entrance way, an in and an out entrance for the project, located along the northern portion of the site. And then there's parking spaces. There's a total of 32. There's 20 on the north side, and then there's 12 up along the building. The front entrance to the building is up here on the corner. So as the building sits primarily closer to the street, so does the entrance way. So it will, you know, the windows, the way that it displays itself, we'll talk a little bit about the architecture here in a minute, but the entrance way is on the corner facing the street. Along the backside of the building, in this back area is really the shipping and receiving area for the building. Thus, they have a shipping and receiving door, and they've got a couple of dumpsters here. Now, this all sits behind the building. And then this section here that kind of flares out from the parking lot is primarily there for the truck so that the truck can come out of the site and then back into this loading space and sit right here while it offloads. So that's the reason, that's really the reason for this is so that the delivery truck can actually sit in this area here while it offloads. We're proposing, so from a utility standpoint, there is public water. Public water is in the roadway in front. There's no sanitary, so we're proposing a septic system in this green space here between the property line and the parking lot. And gas is not available, so we are actually proposing propane. And instead of an underground propane, because we have this rock upcropping here in the middle of the site, we're proposing that that just be above ground and it's bollard. But it is behind the building, so it is pretty much out of sight. Because the property does sit next to a residence, we are proposing a fence from a screening standpoint so that even though there are many mature trees, they're not, as of today, they're not green and they're not, the foliage isn't on there all year round. And then the other utility is storm water. And what we are proposing is a porous pavement solution where all the storm water is then going to be contained beneath the parking lot on the site, and it doesn't leave the site. So there's no connection to a public system. It doesn't flow, well, some of it will flow back to the wetland. But the idea is that it's more of a green concept, and it does stay on the property. We received some feedback from the town on the project. And one of the comments related to, I guess, the soils. And so let me just kind of address the soils a little bit, at least of what we do know. We have taken several samples, some borings out here to make sure that the building can be built, you know, without any special foundation system. And really, it can, but this whole front portion of the site, and maybe some of the residents that are more familiar with this property will know, many, many years ago, it was filled, and it was filled with construction debris. So we do have samples that really tell us that there's brick, there's cinder block, there's pavement, there's asphalt, there's concrete. It all sits there to about a four-foot depth. So we know that that material is there. We've tested that material. We've tested the material underneath it. And, you know, you can do a couple of things with it. We looked at, you know, maybe hauling it all offsite and disposing of it, bringing back in suitable material. What we ended up doing is we found a contractor with an idea of just actually setting up a little operation here where he'll grind it up. We'll just reuse it. Now, of course, not all of it can be reused because some of it, I'm sure, is, you know, topsoil, and some of it's probably got, you know, maybe tree roots or other things that you just can't use. And of course, that material will take offsite. But it's a way that we can actually save a little bit of money without hauling material that, once it's ground up, is suitable for beneath the building, suitable for beneath the parking lot. So then, as we build this area here, the parking lot field, this is where the storm sewer drainage is proposed to take place, the gravel beneath the pavement, beneath the parking lot, actually is the stormwater retention area. It's not a basin, you know, it's not a, per se, where, you know, you can see water. But actually, it will be designed about two feet thick where it will hold water. And then, over time, that water, you know, will drain below into the soils. But, you know, because the site is small enough, it actually is a design that works quite nice. And also because there is a little bit of challenge here with how you do grade or drain this site, it does work into our advantage to look at this as a viable option. We are exploring because the area of pavement that would be porous would be here along the building. And, you know, the low point of it would be pretty much at the end of the parking spaces. So when the water, when it rains, it will drain towards those parking spaces and then get into the gravel bed below it. We are looking at, instead of the porous pavement, Dollar General would rather maybe go to a conventional system where we have catch basins, but we're exploring maybe having three or four catch basins there that then drain into that same gravel bed. If you've ever seen porous pavement before, it looks like the parking lot's not finished because the aggregate is bigger and you have these voids. You know, somebody that might be wearing heels, high heels, you know, the heel could maybe get caught into a void and, you know, so it's not a real smooth parking lot. A skateboarder wouldn't really appreciate that pavement service. So we are going to be working with the engineer instead of using porous pavement here, using maybe a series of catch basins, but the concept remains the same. The gravel below the parking lot would be the detention area, the holding area for the stormwater. I felt it was probably a good idea to just kind of explain that because it did receive some feedback in the notes that I saw. And then the engineer that I brought with me tonight, he can, he could explain it a lot more during Q and A. I'm going to introduce the elevations.
Sure, please.
Okay. All right. These are the two main elevations that are more visible to the public, to the parking lot, to the street. So the southwest elevation, the short elevation on the top, this is actually what will be facing the road as proposed. And so this is where you can see that corner entry where they have the vestibule, where it's glass. And this is where they have their entry feature. It is a covered entry feature. And then on the long elevation, the same entry feature is replicated. There's two columns that come down. This is where they have their signage, which is mounted to signify, you know, that this is a retail building, the tenant is Dollar General. And what we've done on both of these elevations, which are more the visible to the public, is we've taken the, I guess, kind of the flat roof concept, right? While there is still a flat roof, we've taken this long horizontal line and really tried to break it up so that there's, you know, some facade changes in elevation. And we've done that where we've, you know, where we've, essentially what we've done is we've raised the elevation of the cornice line in a couple of areas. And then this line right here is really where the building, you know, the height normally would be. The materials that are on, that we're proposing is a brick material for a base. And this is, you know, this is all for interpretation as far as color and as far as type. And then we've got pilasters that are brick pilasters that are every so often to help break up the facade. And then the material between is a vinyl siding. And that's the, these are the two facades that face, I guess, more of what the public would And then these are the two non-visible sides. This would be the area where the truck would be sitting alongside, and there's their receiving doors. And then you could see actually the parapet. We have not elevated the parapet because really, this is out of sight. And then same thing with the side of the building where it faces the adjacent lot to the south. The parapet also has not been raised. Now, we've turned the corner with it because we do believe that the corner of it would be seen as somebody's traveling northbound on And then this is a three-dimensional rendering that we had prepared, same elevations, but it's just more site-specific. So you could actually visualize what the building, you know, would look like sitting at the site with the corner entry, you know, being up close to the street, the parking lot on the side, the materials, and then, you know, the way that we prepared the elevations for it. That concludes what I've organized for our presentation as far as the introduction of the project. And at this point, I'll turn it over to any questions and answers that the board may have.
Thank you. I'm going to begin just for some, I will call, housekeeping issues, and then we'll go to the consultants, then wind up at the board. That's sort of how I operate each time. First, Mr. Hamula and Mr. Andrus. On the EAF, question eight, it states that there's not going to be any appreciable increase in traffic, which I'm prepared to accept, but you need to provide your source for that. You need to provide the number of daily vehicle trips for a store this size, what it sells from an I.T.E. manual or something, just so we, to clean everything up. On the environmental assessment form, question 15, it states that there are no endangered threat to rare species, but your mapper indicates otherwise that there are endangered threat to rare species present. So you'll need to go to the New York National Heritage Program to look and see what they are. I'm not positive that it was actually cited on, that there's suitable habitat on site, but we need to see at least what they are. We have a unique terrestrial form here called Blanding's Turtles that are, there's only two populations in the entire state, and it may be that your site is suitable for one. So we need to find that out. The D E C is very careful about any threats into Blanding's Turtle habitat. And they usually require an incidental take permit, which is not easy to get, as you can imagine. So we just want to clear that up. Also, on the EAF, it states that there's no archaeological, there's nothing archaeologically sensitive, but your mapper that's included in the narrative also indicates there is. So you probably need to look and see what that is by contacting the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. And there are other sources as well for it. Then I got from your presentation, I mean, I was one of those ones concerned about the porous pavement. The reason being is much of the site where you're proposing the actual development is halsey muck, which is wetland soil. I wasn't aware there was construction debris, but it doesn't surprise me. But I'll let it be, I'll let the town engineer kind of deal with the idea of where the drainage is sufficient there. I was worried with there being muck, that even if the water penetrated, it wouldn't really go anywhere. You might even have mud coming back up and freezing during the winter. And we all are familiar with porous pavement. There are several examples around the area where we've seen it. It's going to be up to the board to determine whether the flat roof has been sufficiently disguised by the facade variations from 108-4.5G, let's see, D1, because it does mention that facade variations, if they can disguise the flatness, and that's acceptable. You don't, we're not at that level, I'm sure, this granular level yet, but it's one of my jobs as chair to make sure I kind of give you a heads up where I see any problems. You don't give any of the actual, there's some, I believe the letter heights of the letters proposed for the sign of the building where the architectural pediments are is 18 inches, and the board can only, the maximum is 12. The board can, at its discretion, give an extra inch for every 20 feet you are off the main entry. But I don't think we can go to 18 inches in any way because you're properly close up to the front of the road. So you'll probably need variances for that. And you didn't give specifications for the single standing sign, the freestanding sign, what the letters are there. Just from eyeballing it, I assume they're about 18 inches, too. So that'll require some kind of variance, an area variance from the Z B A. Again, this is early on. I think we'll want to see the base of the freestanding sign disguised with either brick to complement your pilasters or fieldstone, something instead of just that big black column. It looked to me as though you didn't have, Department of Health requires a 50% expansion area for septic, and I'm not sure you have that in the green area that you proposed, but we can take a look at that as we go forward. That's about it for me. Let me start over with our consultants, Mr. Sotero.
Sure. Thank you. I did take a quick look at the plans on Friday, and I did send Todd an email with some of my preliminary thoughts on it. I think I copied the chairman on that also. I mean, you know, we can work through a lot of the normal things. You know, my main concern is the drainage, you know, as we've, you know, discussed. There was a project that was proposed for this site back in the 90s that we reviewed, and I believe, if I remember correctly, the primary reason why it didn't proceed any further was that it could not manage the drainage. Now, understand, back then, we weren't talking about porous, you know, pavement and, yeah, and such. But, I mean, I don't know if there's been any tests on the underlying, the soils or not.
Well, the depth of construction debris varies from, what is this? The depth of the construction debris varies from, eh, three and a half to five and a half feet, depending on where you are on the site. We dug a whole series of test pits and actually a continuous trench all the way across the site from front to back. And the soil underneath this debris, it's, I guess you could say it's probably a mix of coarse sand and chunks of concrete is the best way to describe it. Underneath that, we got into what was effectively a clay loam.
Right.
And the water table was right there.
Sure.
But percolation rate of that native soil, what appeared to be native soil was probably nonexistent. We did find that there was about 12 inches of topsoil, I guess you could say, that in certain areas was still dry. So it kind of depended on where the site you were. So we're figuring that the water table is basically at the interface between the, between the construction debris and the native soil, which is about five feet below grade, of what the grade is that you see there right now.
No, I'm just, you know, we're curious as to how that'll work once, you know, because it's not going to perk anywhere. It's once it gets through, you know, the construction, you know, debris, and then it's going to stay there, and then it's not going to go anywheres, and it'll fill up, and then it'll freeze and thaw, and
Right.
You know, winter, you know, and spring, and then the pavement's going to break up. I mean, you know, we like the project, and it's just, you know, we just have to try to work through this because, you know, we're not really convinced that it's going to work yet. But, I mean, we'll have to work with you guys on it and see if we can get it to work. But
Okay.
Because I think you guys are assuming a perk rate of like two inches an hour in, you know, your underground reservoir calcs. But again, I can have our drainage person work with either you or, you know, whoever else at your firm, you know, was doing this. But, I mean, that's our major, you know, concern. We didn't go through the plans in great, you know, detail because we're in the very early stages of the project. So, you know, I think once we get over, you know, the drainage hump, then, you know, we can move on to some other things. But, and the other thing that I mentioned in my email was, I don't know if anybody's talked with the county
Yes, I have.
Health department?
Yes, I did. I actually spoke to Jim
Napoli.
Mariani.
Napoli, yeah.
That's it. That's it. Jim Napoli today. He had actually made a site visit back in October. And
Okay.
So I had a lengthy conversation with him on both occasions, and he said that what we're proposing will probably work for him. And he said he would work, likewise, he would work with us to get something
Okay. All right. That's fine. That's fine. Because it just seemed like, I think you guys had 150 gallons, gallons per day. And if you use, you know, the D E C numbers, it comes out to 900.
Right.
And you take some water-saving plumbing fixtures. I'm sure this store doesn't use, you know, 780 gallons
And we have
A day, but
We have justification for using the smaller numbers.
Okay, that's fine. So as long as, you know, you're working with him and, okay, that's fine. So really, you know, our main concern at this point is how we're going to handle the drainage. So, you know, the other things are just normal, normal site plan stuff, but, you know, we'll get to that.
I think that's everyone's concern. I mean, that's often the case of why pieces of parcels sit empty for so many years is because there's an underlying problem with them. But this will be an engineering issue between the two, between the two of you. Ms. Paladore, any comments?
No, at this point, I'm just looking for the additional environmental information.
Okay. Now, let me start to my left, and Mr. Signa.
Yes, first, I want to thank the applicants because I did participate in the meeting we had before this. And I see a lot of our concerns you attempted to incorporate into the plan, and I congratulate you on the effort that you make. I have a couple of questions. How often will that truck come in and deliver?
Sure. The deliveries, they take place once a week, and the truck will sit there for about two hours
Okay.
While they offload it. But it's a delivery that happens once a week during the store hours.
Got you. Second thing, and this was something we talked about in the pre-meeting, you're taking property that is not developed right now rather than an existing vacant building. I think it would behoove all of I think it would behoove all of us to hear the reason why the company prefers to use that approach.
Well, let me, let me try and answer it this way. In markets where they can construct their building, which meets their design, their design, their layout, the number of parking spaces, their visibility, right, their, you know, their image, they would prefer to be freestanding, where it's just them.
Okay.
They do have a lot of inline spaces, and there are some markets where it's not feasible for them to construct a brand-new building, for whatever reason, available sites, construction costs. In markets where the, we, you know, the numbers can work from a construction standpoint and from a, you know, from a feasibility standpoint, that's their preference. They are, they do go into, into strip centers that are existing, where there are, you know, there are businesses that are no longer, and that there's available space, but they typically make concessions in those spaces on how they, you know, lay out their store, how they fixture inside, maybe the loading area, you know, how much space they have for receiving. So, I mean, I don't know if that completely answers your question. I know where you're heading with it, because they're, you know
Keep putting up new buildings when we have existing buildings that are vacant.
I know where you're heading with it, because, you know, it's, you know, we all have lived through, you know, the last four, five, six years, and we now have a lot of additional retail space that's out there, and many of it's empty, and that's not, I know that that's not desirable. They do, they do look at those locations, and in instances where they're able to, from feasibility standpoint, and from image and, you know, and standpoint, they would prefer to be freestanding, but just today, I was actually with them, and we were looking at some other markets, and there's no available sites. And in those cases, we are looking at, you know, maybe a smaller store that is less desirable for them, but they're considering it.
I know there was issues raised regarding the stormwater and how you're going to handle that. Jason to this building is an auto repair shop. I noticed there's a lot of vehicles that are parked, and I always get concerned about vehicles leaking and all of that, and it seems to me that's going to, that ground's taking quite a hit already indirectly from the neighbor. Is that part of any consideration that, has any discussion been made with the neighbor regarding what you're doing and impact that it could have?
There hasn't been any direct discussion with the neighbor, but there is an actual drainage, there's a drainage swale of sorts
Okay.
Between properties.
With vehicles parked on it, if I remember.
Well, there are vehicles parked next to it.
Yeah, yes.
But that drainage swell does head toward the west.
Okay.
So there is a separation
Okay.
A physical separation between the properties.
Now, from, maybe in this way, I thought you were going with this, but from an environmental standpoint, we have done a Phase One, and there was no need of concern to do a Phase Two to test soil or groundwater along the common property line.
Got you.
And I could share that report, I could share that report with the planning board, I have no problem doing that, but we did, we did take a look at that. And, and maybe I should say this, you know, Dollar General will be owning this site.
Right.
They will be owning the property. We are a developer, developing it for them. There are, there are other instances where developers will, will develop a Dollar General location, and they lease it to Dollar General, right? And then they own the building, they own the property. In this case here, we are one of their developers, where we just are finding properties and developing properties that they then will own. So they're, they would be interested in making sure that there are no environmental, adverse environmental impacts to it.
Okay, I'm sorry to take up so much time, I've got one more. You pointed out brick, and I think they might have been meant, any consideration of fieldstone, something that might be more congruent to, to the stone walls we have in Hyde Park, rather than flat brick?
So, so the, the material that's on the base, so the water table up to the, to the bottom of the storefront, that's on the, on the two sides?
Right.
Maybe that material would be better served if it were, if it were a fieldstone?
That's my, my consideration.
We, we could certainly look at that, absolutely.
I'm done.
Thank you, and just to note, Mr. Signa, it would be, we cannot approve a plan that involves or that allows stromwater to go off-site
Right.
That wouldn't be legal, I don't believe.
Correct.
So, if that's, if that's some of the concern. I, just real quickly, when you were talking about having the water flowing toward the west and going into the wetland, we'd also be looking at how it's treated, and making sure that it's not introducing any non-point source pollution as it goes in as well, too.
Right.
So, Mr. Murphy?
First of all, I want to thank you for looking at Hyde Park and thinking about an investment in town, and I want you to know that the planning board wants to get you here, and we want to do everything we can to facilitate your coming and your easier site thing. My only question was, and probably just a minor detail, where are you planning on putting the snow? Do you have a designation spot for that?
You'll need to show an area. We're not at that level yet, but Mr. Murphy is correct. We require people to show snow storage. You can imagine why we request that.
It snows here?
Not at all. In addition, this year, we stop-and-shop relocated across the street a couple of years ago, and I took a look at where they banked their snow, and it was nowhere where they promised to. They lost about 20 parking spaces, and since it all became ice, it's been, you know, now that it's finally melting, there are grocery carts in there, all sorts of stuff, so
Yeah, fuck.
Yeah, just like seeing, I'm waiting for them to find Janie Mihoffa, yeah. But at any rate, it's, we, in a, in a size this small, will definitely require you to show it on the plans, and it may be that that's actually enforced by Ms. Moss, her zoning administrator, if it's located elsewhere, because this office was receiving complaints from people going, "I can't find a place to park," you know, because it is, we unfortunately have one grocery store in town. So, by the way, I'm going to get you, when we're through here with the discussion, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and, since it's sort of free advertising in a way, I'm going to ask you to sort of mention the array of products that Dollar General, you know, vendors, as opposed to what people have in their minds, so
Sure, sure.
Ms. Dexter?
I think almost everything has been stated. First of all, thank you for choosing Hyde Park to look into investing some of, some of your store space. I think the drainage is probably going to be one of your biggest issues. I do share some of Mr. Signa's concerns about building new, and so I guess my question is, would Dollar General, would this, is this their only option, and would they look further in Hyde Park if this didn't work out? Because again, I think you would be a welcome addition, especially on 9G, so, you know, I know you're hearing that everybody would like to work with you and make sure that, if this is viable, that it can work out. But other than that, I think everybody else is, you know, we'll kind of see how this all goes along, but thank you for coming to Hyde Park.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Again, I'd have to echo my colleagues up here with, you know, thank you for looking to invest in Hyde Park, but going back to the drainage issue, I actually, I install permeable pavers, and I've gone through a lot of training for it, and I'm not sure with the idea that you're talking about with the catch basins, kind of working in that same filtration base. One of the reasons those porous pavements or permeable pavers work so well is that the water goes down, you're not forcing water in, you're not collecting, you know, a large volume and kind of shooting it into the, to the drainage basin, in essence. So that might be something to look at. I'm sure the engineers will.
That's a challenge I've given him, since we submitted.
Yeah.
And the reason being is it's a, is, it becomes a maintenance item that has to properly be maintained.
Yeah.
Yes.
And properly installed, which is tough sometimes.
Well, exactly, and, you know, we've agreed with the engineer to do it, to play, to put it in there, if that's, if that's what, you know, ends up kind of working out the stormwater solution here. But if we could also design something that alleviates some of the, you know, the maintenance obligation with the porous pavement, that's kind of why I'm challenging him with, with an idea of maybe having a few catch basins do the same thing. So that's, that's what he's going to look at. He may tell me, "There ain't no way to do it," but we will have to get there.
And going back to what Mr. Signa was saying about, you know, asking the question of why you're looking to start new, and I heard your comments and answers regarding, you know, why you're, why Dollar General would not be open to kind of like a strip mall-type idea, but there are a lot of vacant sites in Hyde Park that are standalone sites, just, you know, so you guys know. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Feliana?
Welcome to Hyde Park. I hope you can resolve the drainage issue. We'd like to have you here. I'm thinking, I'm wondering about the roof. Isn't the roof required to be pitched? Doesn't our, doesn't our code require a pitched roof on buildings like this, or have you resolved that somehow with the step-down roof? I don't know. Has that conformed to requirements, or?
The wording of the code is, "Flat roofs are inconsistent with the traditional character of the town and are not permitted, except where the size or type of the building requires a flat roof." That's generally meant to be a big, huge, big box, not something this small, where, you know, the roof would have to be 40 feet tall to look normal with the pitch. If it requires a flat roof, and facade variations or other architectural features can disguise the flatness of the roof. So, like I said earlier on, that's something for us to determine. If, if everyone feels like that's not disguised adequately by the sort of stepping down and stepping back up, their articulation, then we should let the gentleman know, so they can go back to Dollar General and discuss it.
Isn't this more consistent with Rite Aid?
It does sort of look like the Rite Aid, in a way.
Yeah, and I thought, I saw that consistency and thought that was an advantage to, to making the neighborhood have some commonality.
There's not a lot of contributing product in that area
Yes.
So to speak, so
It's a trend.
Yes. Mr. Feliana, any other comments besides the flattened, the roof, the roof lines?
No, no. Okay. No comment.
Well, first, to sort of summarize, you've heard that, like, before I even do that, let's discuss what the products are that they sell.
Sure, sure. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to have a little marketing opportunity here for Dollar General. So you're right, dollar stores, I think, have a, maybe a bad rap, as far as what, you know, what they're known for. And there are various different kinds of dollar stores out there. We have a place in my town, it's just called Deals, right? You know, I think there's a Char, there's a crazy Charlie's Dollar Store, I think I saw it today, and they tend to be, you know, they tend to look maybe a little like Isors, and maybe the product and merchandise are, are not always what everybody needs or wants, and it's a whole lot of maybe, you know, undesirable stuff to buy. It's, it's junk, right?
Oh, you heard that, huh?
You know, Dollar General, you, believe it or not, who do they compete with? And maybe that kind of is a good way to answer the question. In my, you know, I'm from Ohio, and who runs commercials on the radio talking about their, what you can buy at their store, and how it may be, and how you can actually save more money at their store than a Dollar General, but Walmart? See, Dollar General is really, what they've done is they've taken kind of that, what Walmart does, where they offer things at a value that we all need, and they packaged it and put it into a store that works in smaller communities, where you're not building a 200,000-square-foot supercenter, where you can go in there and you can find 15 types of toilet paper, and know that if you needed to buy some, you know, for, you know, your Boy Scout troop, you know, you could equip them, because they would have it. Dollar General still has toilet paper, but they might only have two different kinds of toilet paper. You know, they sell, they sell makeup, they sell hygiene materials, they sell, they really, they really sell everything that you find in a drugstore, but they also have the grocery component. They have coolers in there for beverages, they have coolers in there for produce, they have coolers in there for, you know, for food, for food items. They have milk, they have juice, they have, you know, creamer for your coffee. I mean, they, it, it's a little mini supermarket, and all of the name brands that we're accustomed to buying at the store, the grocery stores, at the other box stores that are, that are, if not in this town, in adjacent communities, they, they have it here in this, in this roof here, and because they, they deliver to it once a week, they replenish, and of course, you know, they, they, they are able to, you know, determine what products are moving more here than in other stores, and they can equip those trucks so that they're replenishing the materials, but, you know, you can find dog food and cat food, and, and it's, it becomes kind of like that, that, I don't know, that old-fashioned corner grocery store that you would go to, and you could find everything that you needed, and actually at a value, at a, at a good price. Obviously, the, the new store, the newness, everybody likes to go to a new store, so that's, that's an attraction, but the fact that the, the goods and merchandise that they have here, and if it's okay, I would, I'll bring some photos. I've got three or four boards that I've prepared for other presentations to show what the inside looks like, so I can, you can see that it's Revlon, it's Maribel, you know, it's Dairy Men's for the, for the milk products, you know, it's Nabisco. I mean, they sell all these products that we are accustomed to and that we buy, and that we buy, not just things for a dollar, right? I mean, think, you know, things that they sell in there probably don't go up to, you know, anything over maybe $20, but they certainly, it's not just things for, you know, for a dollar. Do they have a dollar section? They do. They have a dollar section, but for the most part, it's, you know, it's everything else in addition to that.
Thank you. That's, having done some research on it, I wanted to make certain that people realize that this is not a traditional dollar store. In fact, the name dates to a really long time ago. This is more of a general store, and from, I don't know what the actual product mix that you're envisioning for Hyde Park is, but I know in some of the interior shots that I was able to find on the web, they sell car products, a small, like, STP, they sell frozen foods, they sell fresh foods. I saw some greeting cards, I've seen cosmetics, I even saw what appeared to be clothing for younger kids, maybe more novelty-looking than traditional, the Oshkosh by Gosh sort of stuff, but they had, it's a real range of merchandise, and I think that's one of the reasons why you heard up here, we all think that there's a dearth of, of really great selling points over on 9G. There's not a lot of, there's, we have the drugstore, and that's about it into the area in terms of the variety of what you're offering there. So that's why we thought that, since we're a community that's only served right now by one grocery store, this is a way of having something that's convenient to 9G without having to come all the way over onto nine, et cetera.
Right.
In addition, I want to point out that you, I said this to the gentleman we had the first pre-application meeting with, and I didn't mean it sarcastically, although I think maybe somebody thought I did. It's not always, we don't always find people who've read the code in advance, who were already trying to give us what the code requires, including the sidewalk along the front, sufficient landscaping to provide shade trees when they mature, et cetera. It was kind of exciting to see that. Having, now that I've seen the actual site plan, I do have to cavil with one, I think you have a parking spot that's actually, it's more, it's the one where the little front car is, it's to the front of the parking, the building line, and they're supposed to be all to the rear. The board can evaluate whether it wants to eliminate that or soften that standard, because it's not really way out. All our standards are mandatory, but they can also be relaxed at the discretion of the board if we find that the property, the uniqueness factors of the property permit that. And I think one thing that occurred to me about the parking is, is that you don't have a lot of room to go in the back. You do have a natural ridge line that rises up, and we want to try to protect ridge lines along the way. The other thing to remind the board is, even though I think that it's important for, particularly the way Ann phrased it, Ms. Dexter's comment that if this, if saying how the drainage is not going to work out, so that this site becomes not something that's viable in terms of economics for you guys, that we'd, we'd love to be able to work with you to see you go into another space. There are several empty spaces up and down Route Nine, Routes Nine and 9G, although they're, they're reducing. But in general, board members, colleagues, it's, while it's important for us to encourage them, we do have to remember that they have the right to, as long as it's permitted, they have the right to go where they want to go. So, I, I believe in reading about Dollar General, now that the corporation is owning more and more of the stores, that seems to be the trend of where they're going, that they probably prefer to have a uniquely built structure, because they've got all the layouts already done inside. It's harder to, it's more expensive, I should say, to adaptively reuse an existing retail space, because it's not always lined up the way you probably have it very efficient, or they have it very efficiently down, so
Right.
I understand, in other words, why they're looking to build something new, and I should also add that under positive impacts, that there will be jobs likely created from this store if it opens, additionally, the expansion of the tax base. These are all things that we should also consider in the environmental assessment that we're doing in our heads. Which brings me to conclude now for the night, that it sounds, first, we need to have the EAF information corrected, you have a little bit more homework to do, and once you submit, make the next submission, then we'll get you on the agenda, and I think then it looks as though we'd be ready to type the action and circulate. A member of the fire department was here earlier, I know in our pre-application meeting, we asked that if you could to meet with them in advance. with them in advance. If not, we will be circulating this to the fire department, but we always try to work well with the fire departments, they're a volunteer, to make sure that there's adequate turning rate AI, so that there's something, it's a safe, safe site to access, safe for your customers as well. And I want to bring up, again, the idea of the drainage, why we're all concerned is, we're just as concerned up here to make certain that your company stays open and viable as well, that it, that it doesn't close within a year because of problems with cracking pavement, no one wanting to go in because of flooding. These are all issues that we bring up, again, not to be contentious or, in any way, other than to say, we want to make sure we're working with you, that this is the best project you can get as well. And I do echo, I believe that it would suit, I think that the bottom baseline, the water table line you called it, of the brick that's proposed, would either be better feel stone, even red brick, I think it would harmonize better with the site, that's just my opinion. And anything else, from anybody else? Victoria or?
Did that on the mobile, didn't we, at the corner? And the Rite Aid, does they, do they have?
They have fieldstone.
Okay.
Rite Aid precedes everyone but Chan's time on the board, so...
The parking space in question, I don't even, I don't have an issue unless my engineer tells me of giving it up.
Is it really?
Dollar General only requires 30, and I think we have 32.
You do?
Well, we have the ability to modify the number of car companies.
Maybe it's only one.
I'm just... Yeah, it's, you know, it looks as though the parking, the parking stall is done to where the roof overhang is, but the code says it's where the building line is. I know this seems picky, you, I just feel like it's my job to throw it all out there and then we can work through it with you.
We, no, I can, actually, that's, that's something that I can actually just say tonight, we'll just eliminate those two that are in the front.
It might only be one. I don't, take, take a look at it.
We'll get there with you, we'll get there with you.
The canopy here is drawn in, so that's not actually the structure, so that one's definitely out, and then the one after it, it depends on the board's interpretation, because the, the building is cut off.
We can relax the standard, they lose one to add more green space, a little more landscaping. Are you familiar when I said the New York National Heritage Program, are you familiar with what I?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Actually, we have, we have, we have done that, the research and done the, looked at the state's website and the environmental mapper, we have that information.
It just didn't make, the narrative says that it's not there.
I didn't correlate with EAF.
Right, well, the EAF says no, but the mapper says yes, and they have to match, as you know.
I, I know they have to match, so I'll check with our environmental person at the office and find out what happened there.
And also what the archaeological, I don't know what might be there.
If you've already done a study of the site, of, you know, what, what it could support as far as natural resources, then you don't need to go to natural heritage if you have a site-specific study. You've already gone through that step.
They didn't hire a threat, threatened endangered species person.
Right, you checked it correctly on the EAF, it's just in the narrative it says, "There's none," and therefore there's no mitigation proposed or anything else, and it's like, if the EAF says yes, we need to know what the, what the actual species is.
I will, I will make sure that that is corrected.
And the same thing with the archaeological sensitive area.
And, yeah. Well, yeah.
It'll be simple, you just go through and you'll have, there's people that do all of them around here.
No, we know, I, we have an environmental specialist on staff who, who takes care of that sort of thing. Yep.
In terms of the archaeological sensitivity, if there's any there, sometimes it's, there were various Indian tribes here in the old days, there was also, in one of our cemeteries, I mean, it's the Union Cemetery, we actually have a section that were dedicated to African, well, now African-American, back then, black or negro, but Civil War soldiers. And so there are habitats that are around that the state takes very seriously, whether we say, "Oh, ignore it." And probably most famously, there was a mastodon discovered not too far away, and so whenever I tell people, mostly when we get the archaeological information, when they do phase studies, it's, we see chirts and things that, when you see them, you're like, "What?" But other times if I say, "Yeah, but do you want a mastodon destroyed?" "Oh, no," because that made Hyde Park kind of famous for a while, so, and that's, it was far away, but it was also in mucky soils, so I don't know what might be here, so, at any rate.
The mastodon, far away as in how far away?
A mile.
No, it was, it was a little more than a mile, because if it's, if it was just within a mile, then that might be what's pegging, what's hitting this, but I think it's more like two miles away, a mile and a half. But, you know, OPRHP will be able to tell you this, your environmental person should be able to research it as well.
Yep, I, I believe that we have that research, I'm just not sure why what you received wasn't correlated properly to that, so, we'll make sure of that.
We run a tight ship up here, all of us, we're BDI when we read these things, so it's, part of it is because if we get all the problems out of the way at the beginning, it speeds up the process at the end, if you know what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
So, yeah, you're familiar. Okie dokie. So, as soon as you have the new material submitted to us, we'll get you back on the agenda and get you, get you, get the process really formally started at that point.
Great.
Any other questions from you?
I wrote down a couple of big issues. One was to make sure we tighten up the application, the, the EAF document, have the engineers really talk about drainage, and really come to a meeting of the minds on, will it work, will it not work, what do we have to do here? Talk to the fire department. On signage, do I want to not make this part of my submit, my application, or do, or was it desirable that it's part of it?
You can start, if you want to get your variances going to the ZBA, we can parallel track it.
Okay.
And they, they're, before they give any variances, we have to conclude seeker.
Okay.
That's legal, that's by law, but you can parallel track it, and what we typically do is, as long as you reserve a spot, a spot for the signs, if you, if we were say to come to where we gave an approval, but you didn't have your variances yet, then all we need to do is just show a sign where, show a location for the signs.
Right, right.
Show a location where the freestanding sign would be, and show, you could show, if we dress up the bottom, say with fieldstone, what it would look like.
Right.
And if you don't get the letter heights that are, that you're asking for, then you come back and just get a $50 sign permit for all three of your signs.
Right.
And they would have to be voted on by us as well, just because it's visible from 9G, the way the code reads. But I would imagine it will probably take us long enough that if you start your application now, you'd be through the ZBA before we are. Other thing is, and I didn't mention it, because again, this is going pretty deep into it, but I couldn't tell if you're proposing backlit, halo lit letters, or if they're internally lit.
They are proposed as internally lit.
Not going to happen. Forbidden in the code, you need, you need to use variance from the ZBA. I shouldn't say not going to happen, 99.9% not going to happen, there's only been three given since the ZBA started.
So they would have to be the backlit.
Yeah. We changed the code to allow that.
The front is opaque.
Right, right. I mean, it can be, Rite Aid down the street actually has them, so does, there are more and more signs now in town that are going that direction. And to be honest with you, from what, several of us have sort of had to learn signs in depth from being up here so long, and that's, the industry is going toward the non-internally lit, the halo lit it's called, mainly because the LED bulbs last much longer, and it's also easier to access than when one does go out, you don't have to open up, you know, an actual letter.
What, what, would the board be okay with then having, introducing some maybe gooseneck fixtures that would?
Gooseneck is fine too. It's all allowed in the code.
To help light up the, the yellow part of the sign, right?
It's all, it's all allowed, it's all allowed in the code as well.
Okay. I'll, I'll pose that question to Dollar General.
Sure. Sometimes your sign fabricators don't like gooseneck lights, because they tell me, "Cast halo light, you don't get to see the whole thing."
Then again, they may say the halo's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's, halo seems to be the industry standard, like I said, where it's going, and we actually changed the code about four years ago, several of us up there proposed it to the town board and they adopted it, so, because before we didn't even allow that.
Okay.
It was only the gooseneck or the, you know, uplight or downlight, so, talk to Dollar General and see what they'd like. Yes, yes. Any other questions?
No, so when we, when we get this additional information and re-admit it, then we'll be able, it's... Then we'll be able to determine the next time I'm going to be in front of the plan.
Oh, yeah, 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 well, what, we'll get the process, I mean, right now, I don't think that this is, to use the legal term ripe, to circulate, because we are missing the information. I mean, particularly because we don't have anything about the endangered threatened or rare species, we'd have to refer to DEC and they'd kick it back.
Right.
It wasn't complete. So, rather than waste time and Dollar, your money, Zeremba's money, as I understand it from, I believe, one of your colleagues, you don't get paid to give a building permit, which, that is a developer of record there, so...
This is true.
We don't want to waste your time or money trying to do things before we're ready to go. Like I said, it saves everyone time and energy, if we get everything, if we get our ducks lined up first, and then go forward. Anything else from you two? No? Okay. So we'll wait to hear from you, and then we'll see you again, I hope shortly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both, gentlemen.
Thank you, appreciate the comments tonight.
Next item on the agenda is a sign permit, a sign permit request. We have a recommendation from Ms. Moss for a new business, going Hyde Park and Ellen Spa, which will be going in behind the shipping place, which is behind Dunkin' Donuts and that little shopping center. And if you've all had a chance to review the sign, it's, it's, has design consistency in terms of the, the letters and the colors, it's all capped, like Dunkin' Donuts, we didn't make, the shipping place do that, which now it seems sort of glaringly obvious, but this, this, to me, has design unity and it's code compliant. Do we have any comments from the board?
I liked it.
Yay!
It was, it's a good, I think it's a good format.
It is.
Yeah, it's good.
I might add, it's exciting to see this little shopping center filling up, just like I think we're going to see the rest of Stop &amp; Shop Pla, or Hyde Park Mall, sorry, fill up now that Dollar Tree is coming in there. So, who has this resolution?
Be me. Resolution number 14-18, whereas the applicant, Yun Chen, Chen, has submitted an application for a tenant wall pylon sign at 3979 Albany Post Road in the Town Center Historic District, whereas, whereas, now therefore be resolved that the planning board recommends approval of the sign submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and now make it a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters perhaps leading to the appointment of a particular person or corporation?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll be on hiatus for a moment, media committee?
Okay, now, so we're going into the little conference hall?
Yeah, quick.
Okay. Cables, will you? And I will get the microphone. Hey, come on back, we're not going to stick around. I've got to wrap things up downstairs, I'm not going to stick, stay here, I'll be back in a few minutes. My preliminary observations are that it's cable vision, I don't think it's a camera. Because when I looked at the broadcast difference between my camera and your town's cameras, they looked good going in, they looked terrible going out.